Okay, presentation and approval of minutes. Have you all had time to look the minutes over? Are there any questions? I would entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented from November fourteenth.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. And then the public forum?
Come on, Tony.
Nobody? Okay, under new business, we have a public hearing of the United or Unified Zoning Code Amendment pertaining to the definitions and use chart. To protect the rights of all parties involved and in order to create an opportunity for everyone to speak their opinions and present information, the Hayesville Planning Commission follows a specific procedure in reaching a decision. A copy is available by the door. Your attention to this procedure is appreciated. Opening instructions, we are now formally open for public hearing to consider the zoning code amendment for the city of Hayesville. Do any members of the planning commission have a conflict of interest in this case? If so, please disqualify yourself from further action on this case. You may choose to speak as a member of the public. Anyone have a conflict?
No.
Have any members received any written or electronic communications on this matter? If so, please read and describe them.
No.
Will staff please present the zoning code amendment?
Good evening. Before you should have the staff report for the zoning code text amendment. We're gonna go over section two oh two definitions and section four hundred, the use chart permitted conditional uses. The initial changes for these sections were first proposed to you on September twelfth of this year. And tonight, we'll really just be going over anything we have staff has proposed since then. The majority of our changes to the definitions sections refer to general formatting changes, as well as some rewording for clarity and consistency with other parts of the city code. And the majority of our changes to the use chart refer to designating appropriate uses for the single-family zero lot line district, tiny home district, and office commercial district, as well as creating a more restrictive light commercial district suitable for neighborhood commercial uses. And creating a more restrictive heavy commercial district suitable for general commercial and unobtrusive manufacturing and industrial uses. And then also expanding the multifamily apartment district to allow for some conditional mixed use. Now, I'm just going to be reading the changes as they're listed in the staff report. That's alright with you guys? You can stop me at any moment if you have any questions or want further clarification. But our first change is on page four of the definitions. We added an adult entertainment definition, which reads means any exhibition, performance, interaction, display, or dance of any type, including but not limited to talking, singing, reading, listening, posing, computer internet activities, computer programs with sex-based content, serving food or beverages, soliciting the sale of food, beverages, or entertainment, pantomiming, modeling, removal of clothing, or any service offered on premises where such action is intended to arouse or excite the sexual desires of the entertainer, other entertainers, or patrons, or if the interaction is characterized by an emphasis on the exposure, depiction, or description of specified anatomical areas, or the conduct or stimulation of specified sexual activities as defined in chapter five, article seven, Hayesville Municipal Code. On page four as well, we also added a definition for all adult entertainment establishment. This means any commercial establishment which is an adult bookstore, adult motion picture theater, adult hotel, adult motion picture arcade, or escort service as defined in chapter five, article seven, Hayesville Municipal Code, and includes any businesses involving adult entertainment as defined herein. On page ten, to the definition for entertainment establishment, we added excluding adult entertainment as defined herein to the definition. On page twenty-five, we removed the definition for sexually oriented business and replaced it with adult entertainment establishment. And on page twenty-nine, we add, we, to wholesale or business services, we added bulk and changed firms to businesses in the definition for clarity. We also added the phrase typical typically realtors. For resale or further distribution, it may also include the sale of both goods and services to individual consumers for clarity and to include wholesale retailers in the definition. Our next changes are gonna be to the use chart. The first change is to manufactured home. We added a permitted use in the single-family district and single-family zero lot line district in accordance with the Kansas State statute two twelve seven six three. To accessory apartment, we added a conditional use in the office commercial district. To assisted living, we removed the conditional use in the manufactured home district, changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial district, and removed the permitted use in heavy commercial district. To group home, we removed permitted use in heavy commercial district, changed permitted use to conditional use in light commercial district. For auditorium or stadium, we added a conditional use in the multifamily apartment district, hotel and motel commercial district, and office commercial district. We added a permitted use in the light commercial district and removed permitted use in the light industrial district and heavy industrial district. To cemetery, we removed the conditional use in the single-family zero lot line district, two-family district, multifamily four district, multifamily apartment district, and light commercial district. To church or place of worship, we changed permitted use to conditional use in single-family suburban district and single-family district. And we removed the conditional use in two-family district, multifamily four district, and manufactured home district. As well as remove the permitted use in light commercial district, heavy commercial district, light industrial district, and heavy industrial district. To community assembly, we added a permitted use in single-family district, single-family zero lot line district, and office commercial district. We changed the conditional use to permitted use in the two-family and multifamily four districts. We removed the conditional use in manufactured home, heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial district, and changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial. To correctional facility, we changed the permitted use to conditional use in light industrial and heavy industrial. For correctional placement residence limited, we removed the permitted use in office commercial, light commercial, and heavy commercial, and also changed the permitted use to conditional use in light industrial and heavy industrial. For correctional placement residence general, we removed the permitted use in light commercial and heavy commercial, and changed the permitted use to conditional use in light industrial district and heavy industrial district. For daycare limited, we added a permitted use in single-family zero lot line district, removed the permitted use in light commercial district, heavy commercial district, and light industrial district, and removed the conditional use in heavy industrial district. For daycare general, we removed the conditional use in single-family suburban, single-family, and heavy industrial district. We changed the permitted use to conditional use in multifamily apartments and removed the permitted use in heavy commercial and light industrial. To day reporting center, we removed the word care from the use type. For golf or course, we removed permitted use in manufactured home, light commercial, heavy commercial, light industrial district, and heavy industrial district. For hospital, we added a conditional use in single-family suburban. We added a permitted use in multifamily four and office commercial district, and removed the permitted use in manufactured home, heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial, and changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial. For library, we removed the permitted use in single-family suburban, manufactured home, office commercial, heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial, and added a permitted use in single-family zero lot line. For neighborhood swimming pool, we added a conditional use in single-family zero lot line and tiny home district. And removed the conditional use in office commercial district, light commercial district, and heavy commercial district. For nursing facility, we added a conditional use in multifamily four and a permitted use in office commercial district. We removed the permitted use in light commercial district, heavy commercial district, and light industrial, and removed the conditional use in heavy industrial district. For parks and recreation, we added a permitted use in single-family zero lot line district, tiny home, and hotel motel commercial district. For recycling collection facility private, we added a permitted use in hotel motel commercial. For recycling collection facility public, we removed the permitted use in light commercial. For recycling processing center, we removed the permitted use in heavy commercial district. For reverse vending machine, we removed the permitted use in light commercial and heavy commercial. For safety service, we removed the conditional use in manufactured home and office commercial and added a conditional use in hotel motel commercial. For school, elementary, middle, and high, we added a conditional use in single-family zero lot line and changed the conditional use to permitted use in two-family and multifamily four. We also added a permitted use in multifamily apartment and removed the conditional use in manufactured home district. For university or college, we added a conditional use in single-family suburban, single-family, and single-family zero lot line, as well as the two-family districts. And we added a permitted use in multifamily four and changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial, while also removing the permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For utility major, we added a conditional use in single-family zero lot line, tiny home, and hotel motel commercial. For utility minor, we added a permitted use in single-family zero lot line, tiny home district, and hotel motel commercial district. On the second page of the use chart, we added adult entertainment to the use, adult entertainment establishment to the use chart to replace sexually oriented business. It's not allowed in any of our districts. To animal care limited, we added a permitted use in office commercial district. To animal care general, we added a conditional use in office commercial district and removed the conditional use in light commercial district. For bed and breakfast inn, we added a conditional use in single-family zero lot line and added a permitted use in hotel motel commercial. We removed the conditional use in two-family and multifamily four districts. And we removed the permitted use in office commercial district and heavy commercial district and changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial district. For car wash, we added a permitted use in hotel motel commercial district, changed the conditional use in office, or added a conditional use in office commercial district and changed permitted use to conditional use in light commercial district. For construction, sales, and service, we added a conditional use in office commercial and removed a permitted use in light commercial. For convenience store, we added a conditional use in multifamily apartment and a permitted use in hotel motel commercial and changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial. For entertainment establishment, we added a conditional use in multifamily apartment and added a permitted use in hotel motel commercial district and removed a permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For event center, we added conditional use in multifamily apartments and a permitted use in hotel motel commercial district and office commercial district. And we removed a permitted use in heavy commercial district, light industrial district, and heavy industrial district. For farmer's market, we added a permitted use in single-family suburban and added a conditional use in single-family district and office commercial district and removed a permitted use in light commercial district. For funeral home, we added a permitted use in office commercial district and removed a permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For heliport, we added a conditional use in single-family suburban and removed a conditional use in multifamily apartment, office commercial, and light commercial. For hotel or motel, we changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial and removed a permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For kennel hobby, we added a conditional use in office commercial and a permitted use in light commercial. For kennel boarding, breeding slash training, we added a conditional use in office commercial and a permitted use in light commercial. For marine facility recreational, we added a conditional use in single-family suburban and removed a permitted use in multifamily apartment in light commercial. For medical service, we changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial district and multifamily apartment. For microbrewery, we added a conditional use in single-family suburban and removed permitted use in hotel motel commercial and office commercial district and changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial. For mobile food unit, we added permitted use in hotel motel commercial district and office commercial district and changed the conditional use to permitted use in light commercial district. For monument sales, we added a conditional use in office commercial district and removed conditional use in light commercial. For nightclub, we added a conditional use in multifamily apartment and removed permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For nurseries and garden centers, we added a conditional use in office commercial and changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial. For office general, we changed the permitted use to conditional use in light commercial. For parking area and accessory drive ancillary, we added a conditional use in single-family zero lot line and tiny home. For pawn shop, we added a conditional use in office commercial and removed a permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For personal care service, we added a conditional use in multifamily apartment and changed the permitted use to conditional use in office commercial, while also removing the permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For personal improvement service, we added a conditional use in multifamily apartment, removed the permitted use in heavy commercial district, light industrial district, and heavy industrial district. For printing and copying limited, we removed the permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For printing and publishing general, we changed the conditional use to permitted use in office commercial. For recreation and entertainment indoor, we added a conditional use in multifamily apartment and added a conditional use in office commercial. We removed the permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For recreation and entertainment indoor, we added a permitted use in single-family suburban and a conditional use in hotel motel commercial and removed the conditional use in light commercial. For recreational vehicle campground, we added a permitted use in single-family suburban and light industrial. We changed the permitted use to conditional use in heavy commercial and added a permitted use in light industrial and heavy industrial. And added solid screening required when adjacent to less intensive zoning districts to the conditions to protect residential districts. For restaurant, we added a conditional use in multifamily apartment and removed the permitted use in office commercial, heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For retail general, we added a conditional use in multifamily apartment and removed the permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For rodeo, we added a conditional use in single-family suburban. For second-hand store, we added a conditional use in office commercial and removed the permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For service station, we added a permitted use in hotel motel commercial and added a conditional use in office commercial and removed the permitted use in light commercial. And also removed the phrase provided related parts and accessory sales with included as follows from the conditions. For sexually oriented business, it was removed from the chart and replaced with adult entertainment establishment. For short-term residential rental, we added a permitted use in tiny home, multifamily four, and multifamily apartment. For tavern or drinking establishment, we added a conditional use in multifamily apartment and removed the permitted use in office commercial, heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. For teen club, we added a conditional use in multifamily apartment and removed the permitted use in heavy commercial, light industrial, and heavy industrial. On third page, for vehicle equipment sales, outdoor, we removed the conditional use in light commercial district, changed and changed the permitted use to conditional use in heavy commercial district and removed the phrase properly drained hard ore from the conditions. For vehicle repair limited, we removed permitted use in light commercial district and changed the permitted use to conditional use in heavy commercial district. For vehicle repair general, we changed the permitted use to conditional use in heavy commercial. For vocational school, we removed the permitted use in office commercial and light commercial. On the fourth page of the use chart, for asphalt or concrete plant limited, we added a conditional use in single-family, single-family zero lot line, and tiny home. We changed the permitted use to conditional use in the two-family, multifamily four, and manufactured home district and added a permitted use in hotel motel commercial. For asphalt or concrete plant general, we removed the conditional use in light commercial and heavy commercial. For basic industry, we added a conditional use in light industrial. For construction burn site limited, we changed the permitted use to conditional use in heavy commercial. For construction burn site general, we removed the conditional use in light industrial and changed the permitted use to conditional use in heavy industrial. For freight terminal, we changed the permitted use to conditional use in light industrial. For gas and or fuel storage and sales, we removed the conditional use in heavy commercial and changed the permitted use to conditional use in light industrial. For landfill, we removed the conditional use in light industrial. For manufacturing limited, we removed the conditional use in single-family suburban and added a conditional use in office commercial and changed the permitted use to conditional use in heavy commercial and light industrial. For manufacturing general, we removed conditional use in single-family suburban and changed the permitted use to conditional use in heavy commercial. For mining and quarrying, we added a conditional use in single-family zero lot line district, tiny home district, manufactured home district, and hotel motel commercial district. For oil and gas drilling, we added a conditional use in single-family zero lot line districts, tiny home district, manufactured home district, and hotel and motel commercial districts. For research services, we removed the permitted use in heavy commercial district. For transfer station, we removed the conditional use in light industrial. For warehousing, we removed the permitted use in heavy commercial. For agricultural, we added a permitted use in single-family zero lot line, tiny home, and hotel motel commercial. For agricultural processing, we fixed the misspelling of agriculture and removed permitted use in light industrial district. For agricultural research, we removed permitted use in light commercial. And for agricultural sales and research and service, we removed the conditional use in single-family suburban and removed the permitted use in light commercial. And finally, for grain storage, we removed the conditional use in light commercial and heavy commercial.
Do any commissioners have any questions of staff?
I have a question about why the microbrewery doesn't match the nightclub and the tavern.
Because microbrewery would also be where you are making the malt beverages. So it would be more of a manufacturing than it would be of an entertainment.
But, a microbrewery cannot sell anything unless it's a nightclub. So, if you want to open a microbrewery in a LC, you'd have to have a nightclub permit also, or a liquor drinking establishment permit also.
That is news to me.
Yeah. I mean, just something to look at, you might look at. Because a microbrewery, if you just want to have a microbrewery and literally sell cans or to-go off that premise, you can, but you cannot have a taproom or a drinking room without two permits.
Okay, so microbrewery and nightclub go hand in hand?
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking you should look at the night, microbrewery nightclub and tavern and drinking establishment, because that's what it has to be as a drinking establishment. Just something to look at.
Good to have that knowledge.
Fortunately, I've been through that last year, so.
Now is the time for any member of the public to speak. You have five minutes. If you're presenting good factual information, this time may be extended by vote. Please state your name and address. Don't believe there are any members of the public to speak. Any questions of the public from, from the commission? Again, I don't believe there are anyone here from the public. Public comment is now closed for commission action, and the floor is open to the commissioners' comments. You have anything? Mark?
No, ma'am.
I would entertain a motion to recommend approval, denial of the zoning code amendment.
Okay, I'll make a motion to to approve the zoning code amendment for the city of Hayesville, Seton County, Kansas.
Do we have a second?
A second motion.
Do we need to incorporate the changes? I don't think they can, I don't think we can incorporate changes now, right? You'd have to look at it all.
You can recommend approval with changes.
Yeah.
But first, there is the motion, so we need to act on this motion. If you wanted to say no to this motion, you could make a different motion to either incorporate the changes or to table until you've had a chance to look at the changes.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
I'll do a. So it, I guess.
I think we need to oppose the motion and then reopen the motion with the changes.
Okay.
We're gonna do a do-over.
Yeah. So, opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Do I have a second motion with the amendment?
You want me to do it?
Yeah.
Our committee of planning recommends approval of the zoning code amendment for the city of Hayesville with the changes required or discussed about microbrewery and drinking establishment.
Yeah, and I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that?
Just maybe there isn't any change to be made, but it needs to be at least looked at.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now we'll have the review of the 2025 closing calendar.
So this is our closing calendar for the year. Just our submission deadlines, publication dates, and your dates for meetings, as well as when they will go to city council.
Do you need a vote on that?
No.
Just confirmation.
This is just for you guys to review.
Okay. Any questions on any of that? Okay, we'll move on to review of the 2025 master plan review calendar.
This is the same as our closing calendar, again, just for your review. No motion is required.
A motion is required?
Not required.
Okay. Any questions?
No. So I do have a question. So I see on here we have the South Meridian Corridor Plan in September of next year. So with a lot of the changes that have happened on the South Meridian area, and I know that there have been some things approved by the commission and through city council, would that be better to be brought up earlier in the year rather than later in the year?
We can do that.
It's just a comment question.
The beginning months of the year are pretty empty, so we could definitely bring that up.
I mean, I don't know if the, if you are ready. I mean, I don't know if you are ready for that, or it was put there for a reason, that's why I ask.
I, it's in September, it was in September in 2024, so it's in September for 2025.
I just know that there's a lot happening in that area, so.
I'm okay reviewing it in March or May.
Just something to consider.
So... Okay, the review of the planning commission bylaws regarding attendance.
So, this is a review of our attendance policy for the planning commission. The most important part of this is that commissioners are to be at twenty percent, or only allowed, or, sorry. You are to not be absent from more than twenty percent of the meetings with notification to the secretary, and that makes up approximately four meetings. We are able to accommodate absences via Zoom if you can join that way, and then you don't have to be absent, and you won't be one of you four. But this is just for your review again as a reminder for the attendance policy.
Any discussion on that? Okay, old business? Correspondence? Any off agenda?
Our next meeting date is January 9th.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will close the planning commission meeting.